Well, good evening. Welcome to this North Ridgeville City Schools Board of Education meeting for Monday, January 27th. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is the Constitution under God, indivisible, with the presence of justice, moral,
Roll call, please. Mr. Grigsby here. Mr. Haynes here. Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Saxon.
Here.
Mr. Vaca.
Here.
Finalization of the agenda as it's presented?
The agenda is finalized, presented.
Thank you very much. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the written summary of the regular and special minutes for the meetings on December 3rd, 2024, December 17th, 2024.
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Saxon, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby, yes. Mr. Haynes, yes. And Mr. Vaca, yes. All right, we'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Okay. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's Board of Education meeting. We have a lot of people to honor and recognize tonight and want to take a moment to recognize some of the true superheroes of our district, our Board of Education members. President Vaca, Vice President McCarthy, Board Members Grigsby, Board Member Haynes, and Board Member Saxon. January is Board of Education Recognition Month, and there's no better time to recognize the everyday superheroes who do work tirelessly behind the scenes to support our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. Every superhero has a mission, and ours are no different. Armed with vision, courage, and dedication, these people ensure that every student in North Ridgeville City Schools has access to the very best education possible. They may not wear capes, but their superhero powers are very clear. They advocate for our students, they guide our district, and they make decisions that build a brighter future for us all. Tonight, we celebrate your commitment, your resilience, and the countless hours you devote to shaping the success of our schools. I want to thank our board members for being the champions our district needs, the champions who empower our students to design their preferred futures. You are truly heroes in education, and we thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to introduce Mayor Kevin Corcoran, who also has a proclamation for our board members.
You. You. I'd be over a superhero tonight, I would have worn my own shoes. You know, I've been doing this now for several years, but I don't want to miss out on saying how important your role is in this community. And I don't want to diminish the fact that I say somewhat of the same words each and every time, but, you know, it's really important the work that you do for all of the kids in the community. So, thank you. But I'll read this proclamation. "Our community recognizes quality education as an essential foundation for success and growth in the lives of our children." And Mr. Frank Vaca, Mrs. Kelly McCarthy, Mrs. Marcy Saxon, Mr. Jeff Grigsby, Mr. David Haynes dedicate their time and expertise serving on the North Ridgeville Board of Education, making significant contributions to our community. And these dedicated local leaders establish the policies and procedures that guide all aspects of school district operations. The school board plays a vital role in maintaining focus on progress towards the city's goals while fostering open two-way communication with all segments of the community. The members of the school board serve with integrity, honor, and a steadfast commitment to the future of our children. Therefore, I, Mayor Kevin Corcoran, on behalf of the City of North Ridgeville, hereby express my gratitude to the members of the North Ridgeville School Board and proclaim the month of January 2025 as School Board Recognition Month in North Ridgeville. I urge all citizens to join me in acknowledging the dedication and hard work of our local school board members and in partnering with them to shape an education system that meets the needs of today's children and prepares for tomorrow's challenges. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Just to wrap up and thank you all again, you do have some mementos, all of us to you, and hope you will enjoy your mementos for 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I would like to now introduce Ms. Andreia Vance, Principal of ECLC, who would like to begin our Student of the Month recognition.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure tonight of introducing our ECLC Students of the Month. We're going to start with Nora Heller, and Nora was our Student of the Month from last month, but she was not able to make it, so we're glad that she's here tonight. And Nora's preschool teacher is Ms. Diabato, and Ms. Diabato says that Nora has been a wonderful role model to her classmates. She is always the first to volunteer to help her teachers and peers with tasks. Nora is also willing to share her thoughts about any given topic. She always has a story to share with the class, and she is always positive and has a wonderful attitude with everything that she does. She tries her hardest and never gives up. It has been a pleasure to watch Nora grow this year, and we look forward to seeing her continue to grow. Ms. Diabato, Ms. Brittany, Ms. Kim, and Ms. Vance are so proud of you, Nora. Keep up the great work. And our next preschool student that was not able to be here tonight is Riker Boils, and Riker is also in preschool. And his teacher is Mrs. Deet, and Mrs. Deet says that Riker is in his second year of preschool with her and deserves to be Student of the Month because of his perseverance he has shown this school year. Riker has grown so much in the last couple years in preschool and has developed an excitement about school and made lots of friends this year. Riker has been following the school rules, learning new skills, and prepared, prepared, preparing himself for the school age and has been eager to try a new thing. He's come, he comes to school happy each day and is excited to talk to his teachers and tell them all about his interests. He has grown up so much and has made such great progress over the course of these two years, and both last year's teachers and this year's teachers are very impressed and delighted to see how far you've come. Congratulations, Riker. And our next Student of the Month is Hudson Hobs. Hudson, you want to wait? He's in kindergarten in Miss Connor's room. Oh, don't wait yet. And Miss Connor writes that Hudson has shown perseverance often in the classroom. Hudson always has a positive mindset and shines, and it shines through every single day. He shows outstanding determination and consistently stays focused on his goals in the classroom. Congratulations to Hudson for being our Student of the Month for kindergarten.
And just as a reminder, we are going to take pictures. We'll take a brief intermission to the conclusion of this, so if you could stick around so we can get a picture of your children, we would appreciate it.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, I have the honor of introducing first Abigail Jackson. She's a first grade student at Liberty in Mrs. Rognick's room. Mrs. Rognick wrote that Abigail is a kind and thoughtful part of our class family. She takes learning and being a good example to her classmates very seriously. We love her enthusiasm for learning and her ability to help others in need. Abby, we are so proud of you. We are so lucky to have you in our class family. And next, we have Ian Sullinger. He is a second grade student in Mrs. Seifer's classroom. And Mrs. Seifer wrote that Ian has earned Student of the Month for January for so many reasons. Ian has really taken ownership of his work and his area. He has come up with his own strategy to keep his items organized and off of the floor. He has also worked on returning items around the classroom to their owner and correct location. He has really worked on his hand grading this month, which has faces and is very neat. I've been impressed with how he is taking what we are learning and including it in his writing. Ian has been so focused on learning. Keep up the great work, Ian.
Ms. Sullivan from Interact.
Well, good evening, everyone. We have a lot of students from Interact. We typically have four. We've got one student who couldn't make it tonight, so I'll be sure to read some information about her. Our first Student of the Month is Sophia Asedas, a fourth grade student in the yellow studio. Here are some great things that her teacher said about her. I'm at that point. I have to wear these. I didn't make the writing big enough to read. Sophia's dedication and perseverance are truly remarkable. She always gives 100% effort in everything she does, approaching each task with determination and an unwavering positive attitude. Even when faced with challenges, she never gives up, showing incredible strength and resilience. Her commitment to working hard toward her goals inspires those around her and sets a wonderful example of what it means to work hard and believe in yourselves. Keep striving. You're making a difference every day, improving that with positivity and effort, anything is possible. Congratulations. Next is James Chuliba. James, here's some great things that were said about you. You ready for this? Okay. James is being recognized for demonstrating the Ranger strong attribute of teamwork. He has served as a bridge between his classrooms cultivating meaningful relationships in both environments. He is a positive influence on his peers, showing them what it means to be helpful, kind, and flexible. James brings joy to everyone with his smile and wit. Congratulations, James. Next up is Brynlee Hanson. She was unable to be here today. I will certainly read the great things that were said about her. Brynlee consistently shows that she is prepared for class and ready to work. She takes the initiative to advocate for herself in situations where she is unclear. She also looks for opportunities to help staff or peers in any way she can. She has a positive attitude every day and goes above and beyond to be an excellent student. We are so happy she is part of Teal Studio. Congratulations, Brynlee. And last but not least, Vivian Kane, an eighth grade student in our green studio. Vivian is an outstanding student in the eight green studio. She comes to school each day and every day with a positive mindset and willingness to put forth her best effort. She is kind, caring, and respectful to everyone. She is a dynamic individual and truly an asset to our school district. She strives for mastery in all of her academic courses, demonstrates amazing teamwork in school and through sports programs, and is a leader within our building through her work with Project Leads. Her teachers could not be more proud of her amazing work. Vivian has done this school year. Congratulations, Vivian. Great job, everyone. I'll turn it over to Ms. Durgin.
Thank you so much. I am very proud to be here tonight and to be recognizing two of our outstanding learners at Ranger High Tech Academy. Before I begin, I just want to take a moment to thank all of our school board members for all of the work that you do every day, not only during school board appreciation month. All right, so we are going to start with Mackenzie Hollis, and Mackenzie was nominated by Coach Carbone, flash Kidwell, whatever she was like at the moment, right? And this is what Coach Carbone had to say about Mackenzie. "Mackenzie consistently demonstrates Ranger strong attributes. She is respectful to coaches, peers, guest coaches, and guest speakers. Mackenzie goes out of her way to show her gratitude towards our guest speakers by writing gracious thank you notes. She also has gone above and beyond this year in math. She asks clarifying questions and works with determination to understand new content. Mackenzie stinks academic challenges for herself and is always striving to grow and succeed. Great work this year, Mackenzie. You are a positive fifth grade role model." Our next learner of the month is Jonathan Jaworski. Jonathan is in eighth grade, and he was nominated by Coach Cooley. And this is what Coach Cooley has to say about Jonathan. "Jonathan crushed Spanish in the second quarter. He completed all of his assignments on time, advocated for himself, asking questions when he needed help, and completed all of the makeup work from when he was out sick. He's always prepared for class, is an active participant, and is willing to help classmates when they need it. His hard work was reflected in his outstanding assessment scores this quarter. It's great to have students in class like Jonathan that are excited to learn Spanish and are joyful in doing so. Keep up the hard work. Good job, Jonathan." And I would just like to say Jonathan is in high school Spanish 2 in eighth grade, so that's pretty impressive. And now I would like to turn it over to Mr. Mueller, who is going to recognize our high school learner.
Good evening, everyone. And I would like to also share the congratulations that were shared by the mayor to our board members during board appreciation months. Thank you for what you do. Much appreciated. Good evening, everyone. As usual, I get the great honor of taking kids at the exit end of our program and presenting them for special recognition. We regularly do seniors from the high school because this is their last shot. Tonight, I have two. We're going to start with Abraham Aljagrad because he's here. But not only because he's here, but because of how deserving he is for this recognition. I'd also like to thank Mr. Sullivan for the remarks and the words that you're going to hear year after year. Confidence and dedication. Those are only two of the qualities that describe this young man, Abraham Aljagrad, who is our Senior Student of the Month from North Ridgeville High School. He's a perfectionist. If I were to tell you that he took 100 courses, I would tell you that he is 98% pure in earning the highest achievement in each course he pursues. He pursues AP coursework. He pursues college credit plus coursework. And the reason that I had the honor of nominating Abraham is because he does so with respect, humility, dedication, and maturity. He is a member of our track team and our cross-country team. He is a relentless leader who leads by example in his dedication. And he is, as I said to his mom, you want to introduce your mom? I congratulated her on how she has prepared him. I congratulate him and present him to our families as an example of the kind of graduate and the kind of Ranger we exhume for all of our students. Abraham's plans after high school are psychology and medicine, and you can be sure that he will be successful. Abraham Aljagrad. Our next student is Lola Singleton, and I wish you would have had a chance to meet her tonight. She was available last Monday, but she was okay not coming because of where we were with the week. You know, by the way, I did make a decision today. We're doing no more Mondays. We did one today. No more Mondays this month. Lola is also a member of Class 2025, and on the merit of her scholarship, she is deserving to be recognized as Student of the Month. Lola is also a leader. You can find her at the front of our student section, making sure that all of our Rangers behave and represent our programs and our community in a respectful manner. Unlike Abraham, she's not 100% successful with that. Some of our kids have a tendency to go a little sideways, but not because Lola's not trying. Lola is also one of the coolest kids I've ever come across. And I want, I want to talk about that word again, confidence. If we can help our kids gain confidence and not wonder about their self-worth, we will have done our job. Now Lola is a confident young lady who is, who is a leader in our Ranger TV program. She is behind the scenes. She does not produce them, but she directs them. She plans to continue her education at Ohio University in the fall in broadcast journalism. Lola Singleton.
Now, I would like to introduce our Director of Human Resources, Annie Hostetler, who will present to you our Staff Members of the Month.
Good evening, everybody, and congratulations to our students. It's always so nice to the second board member, our board meeting in a month to see all of you here. I mean, it's quite an honor and wonderful things that your principals and teachers have said about you. On behalf of the Board of Education, it is always my pleasure to introduce two staff members. And, you know, these staff members that each month have demonstrated extreme care for our students or excellence in and out of the classroom. So, our first winner this evening is Mrs. Lynn Prince. Lynn started her career at the middle school in 1992. She is currently teaching a social studies courses at the high school. In addition to her teaching responsibilities, Lynn has also been a key club advisor, member of the building and district leadership teams, and the coordinator of the resident educator program. She has also been instrumental in developing a robust and diversified advanced placement program at the high school. One of Lynn's colleagues nominated her who had this to share. Lynn is an amazing teacher and department head. She goes above and beyond for all of her students and works so hard to make sure the social studies department offers the best classes to help students achieve their greatest potential. As a department head, Lynn keeps us organized and is so supportive of everyone. Most of all, our department is more like a family than a group of colleagues, and that's all because of Lynn. Another colleague had this to share. As a teacher, she works diligently to make her rigorous advanced placement courses both challenging and rewarding for her students. She is a gifted educator who empowers her students to critically think and problem solve. Congratulations, Lynn, and thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to that. Our second staff member this month is Mr. Joseph Lukachinsky. Joe? Joe worked as a cleaner in the high school until November of 2017, and since resigning that position, he has been with us as a substitute for the district as a custodian and cleaner. He has worked almost every day covering our open positions. Multiple colleagues nominated Joe for his work ethic, dedication, and kindness. One had this to share. "We'd like to take a moment to recognize Joe, who is an incredible asset to our district. Joe continues to inspire all of us with his unwavering work ethic and positive attitude. Joe goes above and beyond to support our team, frequently stepping in as a substitute and helping whenever he's needed. He handles all the setup and breakdown for our board meetings with efficiency and care, ensuring everything runs smoothly. No matter the task or the time, Joe is always willing to lend a helping hand and gives his absolute best every time. We are so grateful for Joe's commitment to our schools and his continued efforts to make a difference. Joe's recognition gives us a great opportunity to showcase the importance of our substitutes and the value of their work and their importance in keeping our district running effectively." So, thank you, Joe, for all you do. Thank you. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all of our parents and staff members and students who nominate our staff members each month. It's always a great way to share all of the wonderful things that are happening.
Congratulations to all our students and staff. Our staff are the superheroes of this district. They're the ones that should be celebrated. Their commitment and dedication to these kids is the reason we're able to celebrate these kids' successes, because they truly treat each child as the individual they are, and they go out of their way to make sure that each child is given the tools to succeed. So, that's what we should be celebrating, is our staff. Kids, awesome job. Keep doing what you're doing. Doing it well. And our seniors, look forward to seeing what you all do in the future. Congratulations. We're going to take a brief recess for pictures. If you all like to come back and enjoy the rest of the meeting, feel free. If you want to run to your cars in the parking lot, you can do that as well. All right. Welcome back. Here's an opportunity for announcements and hearing of the public. Ms. McCarthy, do an announcement for us this evening.
Yeah, Mr. Vaca, I just wanted to make sure everyone can save the date for the State of North Ridgeville on February 25th, I believe, starts at 6:00 PM here in the academic center. It is an opportunity to hear what's going on, not only in the city of North Ridgeville, but within the North Ridgeville City School District as well. And ours will be for that. You'll get more information in Chamber of Commerce website.
Thank you very much. And here's an opportunity for hearing of the public. If anybody in attendance this evening would like to address the Board of Education, now is your opportunity. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda resolution as presented. That was moved by Saxon, second by Mr. Haynes. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Finance report, Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you. We have resolutions. Thanks to approve the financial statements and report of interest and investments for the month of December 2024. I move to approve this item in one reading.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCarthy, second by Ms. Saxon. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Human Resources report, Mr. Haynes.
We have a few items to consider in the Human Resources report. One
One certified staff leave replacement contract. One non-represented support staff contract. Five support staff appointments. Three support substitute contracts. Three N R E A supplemental contracts. Nine non-N R E A supplemental contracts. Three unpaid volunteer recognition, recognition. Two certified staff contract adjustments. Three support staff leave of absence. One administrative staff resignation. One non-represented support staff resignation. Four support staff resi- resignations and one supplemental contract resignation. I move to approve the Human Resources Report in one reading.
Second.
By Mr. Haynes, second by Ms. Saxton. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxton.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Okay, we will continue with Human Resources, Resources Report, Mr. Haynes.
Thank you. Uh, we have one more item to consider under the Human Resources Report. One unpaid volunteer. I move to approve the Human Resources Report in one reading.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Haynes, second by Ms. Saxton. Is any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxton.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
I've seen.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
And Mr. Haynes, we will continue with you, please.
We have one more item to consider under the Human Resources Report. One supplemental resignation. I move to approve the Human Resources Report in one reading.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Haynes, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Haynes, yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxton.
I've seen.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
It is recommended that the Board of Education enter to executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, compensation of public employees, and matters related to negotiations of public employees. There will be no action to file.
Both. Second.
Moved by Ms. Saxton, second by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call please.
Mrs. Saxton.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Glad the rest of your evening.